I hate. I feel like this is really close to me. And it's glowing.
Eyes are.
I do, that's how my it looks like it's looking at me.
Did you mess up the?
It's three sixty. It's three sixty, it's just the eyes that are. And I'm reading.
All right, it's six o'clock. All right, study session, we'll start with the YMCA discussion updates by Mayor.
All right, well, we've been having meetings all throughout the year on this mainly with health talk and individuals to. And so that's been going well, my life is about ten, ten or so people on that. This group is responsible for kind of giving ideas to locations, I think there's about three locations are gonna be floated right now. Finding mechanisms. Stuff like that, of course, council is gonna be involved with all the after it gets through the the basic steering committee. Part that has to have council support on it to move forward, we wouldn't want to do anywhere else, so. Like the first meeting to be held in early January, probably the first week. And other than that, happy to answer any questions anyone has on it.
What's our involvement?
Involvement, a lot of it's similar to the steering committee, it's whether what you want to do for funding, whether you want to. Try to seek private donations, all that stuff, whether you think that it's reasonable to ask the. The people for like a bond or something like that. I'm guessing you're gonna say no, James, but I mean, there's different.
Well.
Is that standard that the YMCA basically asked the city to build it for?
It's, yeah, it's not.
Is that what's going on?
It, yeah, so they ask for partnerships. It's very common for cities do it, last one they did it with Sheldon, they led a lot of it, schools are usually involved in it, there's a lot of different partnerships. The city is a key partnership, obviously, schools will be a key partnership, different health organizations will be a lot of different groups, local groups as well.
What's the benefit to the residents?
I think the biggest thing, I mean.
Other than just having it.
Yeah, so. I'm sure you've heard is I have over the years, one of the biggest things that people want in Yelm is a swimming pool, yeah, that's gonna be, you know, all the conversations that I've had. From the very get go have been have been starting with, we have to have an indoor swimming pool or it's a nonstarter for us.
What I mean more of is. If you're asking for the people that live here to build it. Do they get? Say, if you have a city Yelm. Address, do you have a discounted membership, do you have something like that, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I that's all on the table, absolutely, we can talk about that.
The way I look at it. Me personally, you already know, I'm gonna say. Figure it out on your own, but. The world doesn't work the way that I want it to, so if you're gonna be asking for the people in Yelm to build this place. Obviously, there's ongoing costs of running the place, so not everyone can just go for free, but. I think there should be an ask there, if you have a Yelm address, then you should have a discounted membership for that location.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, the other other benefits like for schools, there is. We can bring back our swim team, we can provide other sources for like senior citizens and all that for exercise rehabilitation. Health care, there's talks of providence coming in and helping out with a certain section, there's other topics as well for other healthcare matters, but that's just. What we've been discussing right now.
Yeah, my understanding was not so much how much it costs to build, but in how much it costs to run every year, so that would be ongoing funding.
Not from the city, no, so it's all.
From outside.
Yeah, once the capital campaign's completed, they actually build the facility, it would shift over to the YMCA managing it and all that.
That's where membership is covered.
Yeah, and then, but there's still options, like, like you said, and I agree, I I think there should be. You know, Yelm's for offering the bill, and yeah, Yelm should have some sort of benefit as well besides just obviously having childcare or swimming pool and all that stuff. The other thing I did want to mention is, while there might be other projects for YMCA, Southside YMCA. He, the CEO has committed to me that they are very still interested in and committed to Yelm, regardless of all those other projects, this is still one of their core sensitive areas.
Well, for them, as a business perspective, it makes sense. Insurance is gonna be one of the fastest growing areas in probably this state.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Not to, is there any other questions on the why? Or I didn't.
Not that I can formulate at this time, but yeah, I'm trying to formulate it.
Feel free to ask me to whenever you want, the other thing I had been reaching out to is. With Indigo Multicare, and they're currently looking to build a shelter, so if we get urgent care in Yelm, I think they'll be able to. So it's very early stages, they haven't reached out any permits or anything, but they're they're looking at.
Is there any top location or is that too early?
That's what they're looking for right now.
They should put away where the medical center is.
Yeah.
It's a no brainer.
Yeah.
They don't know where to go in medical pauses, so you can see him. I mean, Lacy, it's next to the warmer and that little.
Bon pizza.
Yeah.
And then salon.
Yeah, you talk about like walk-in emergency centers, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, urgent care, yeah, they can do quite a bit there, but.
It's a block in smaller.
No, trauma center, it's just.
There's like six rooms.
That would be good.
Yeah, Indigo is really great, I love Multicare.
Yeah, it's good.
Anything else? Okay. Um, purchasing policy resolutions.
So I have emailed these out to everybody. But I just wanted to bring it up tonight.
You's get it up.
I'm not.
Do you have that battery? Just turn it off, you missed, that one works.
How do these people see this? How do these people see it?
I think they're around.
So basically, what resolution six twenty-nine is, is we're adopting a purchasing policy. The city hasn't really had a formal policy, and it's something that auditors highly suggest that we have, so really. It's directed toward the purchase of goods and services using an open fair documented and competitive process. I worked with a CPA on this to make sure that our policy is in compliance with the latest applicable state laws and regulations because. All of the different bidding requirements and purchasing requirements are laid out in the RCWs, so this policy reflects those RCWs. In addition, the policy takes into account that the city uses the MRSC small works roster. They maintain those rosters so that we don't have to. Maintain them in-house, it saves us a substantial amount of staff time, and I think it's. It's a, it's a scale, and I think we're around the hundred dollar mark or so for to participate in those rosters, so. I just wanted to come tonight and ask if there were any questions on the purchasing policy. It's pretty, it's a pretty lengthy policy, it does have. At the very end of the policy, I have a couple different tables. Just showing the different. Oh, yeah, the different thresholds for different public works projects. Purchases of goods and services. Projects that might have a single trade or need a multiple trades, also will address. Architectural services, engineering services, and all that stuff, so. Were there any questions on the purchasing policy?
She sent this out a couple weeks ago.
Yep. And then we also, the second table in here really outlines who. Who would, so say we go out and we do a project like the. Water reclamation facility, who's going to sign those invoices and the dollar thresholds for who can sign what, so. Obviously, the lower threshold invoices, we would have maybe a manager, whereas if it's something over. You know, a couple hundred thousand and more, we would want the mayor of the city administrator to sign it, so.
And you said this wasn't in place before, there wasn't something like this?
We have. We had kind of standard procedures that we followed, but we never had it like in written form like this. And so this is just taking the most current laws and regulations and putting it in. Written form, and you're going to going to see that I'm gonna be bringing forward quite a few different policies throughout the next year. Because we we just. Practice to have everything in writing, so.
I totally agree, thank you.
Yeah, just be, just be clear on that, though, a hundred, over a hundred thousand, all that's. Any of those major purchases, those are all approved by council.
Any purchase that's approved in the budget that counts.
Is this basically just stay like up to those dollar amounts? The departments could do without doing the bid process, is that?
So like this first one in-house public works projects of a single trade. If it's under seventy-five thousand five hundred, we can do it with city forces without calling for those quotes, and then. It kind of goes.
Sounds cool.
I just wanted to join.
So if there's no questions on that, I'll pull up the next resolution.
Side question. Do we utilize city staff for as much as possible anyway?
Yes, I believe we do.
I would assume it's cheaper for us to do it ourselves than ever bid it up anyway.
Right.
Yeah, some some specialized stuff, we obviously contract out, but the vast majority of the center on public works folks can do here.
Like we have our own engineering staff, but of course, like when you're going to a big project, like we need to hire that engineers. For the reclamation facility. But yeah, we do try and utilize city staff whenever possible, because it is. All right. So resolution six twenty-seven, we are required by MRSC when we use their. Small works rosters, this is their template. Resolution that they asked us to pass, we actually. Had passed a resolution five thirty-five several years ago. Stating that the city was using the MRSC small works rosters. But MRSC has now updated their resolution, and so therefore we're bringing this forward to have ours updated, and then we'll. When we pass this, we'll send it off to MRSC, so. Basically, this one just lays out what MRSC does for us and what we can use those rosters for.
And you said there was a cost.
It's a sliding scale, it depends on your population, and so we're around a hundred dollars.
Now, MR is what is this, a list of contractors that are approved?
Right, so they make sure that like a contractor is not on the suspended or devolved list. That they have their proper licenses and that sort of thing. So if a vendor wants to be on one of the small works rosters, they would contact MRSC and go through the process to be vetted to put on the rosters.
And so those are the only people that are allowed to get city contracts?
If we're gonna do a project and we want to use a roster. Then we would look at those rosters first, I don't think it requires us to only use those rosters. But it's a way to. To save us time in having to go out and do like a formal bid if we can use the rosters, so. And Cody, you have more experience than I do.
Yeah, you're exactly right, it prevents us from, so if we want a small product that's, you know, sixty thousand dollars, and you don't want to go through a bid process, we can use a small works roster and go. Here's a company, they specialize in, and we can use them off the small work roster, and that's legal, if we have a safe project, we go out to bid to it, and anyone can apply for that. And then we vet them through our process, through the process, so they can do their insurance, everything.
So this typically just for smaller products.
Yeah, that's why it's smaller, yeah.
And all the cities that belong to that use the same contractors in that pool.
Right, so all the cities that belong to the. Pay into the membership are all looking at the same.
That's a pretty good deal for them.
And you know, if we're doing a project where it's grant funded. It's really important that we use a vendor that's in good standing, because. Say we go out and we contract with somebody, but we miss that they are on the suspended list. We could not only lose that grant money, but we might have to pay it back or possibly not get any more grants, so. It's just, it's a safeguard for us as well, so.
Angie's List.
Yeah. So we'll bring these forward for a motion on the.
Any other questions?
She said like a membership fee, they gotta pay you.
Hundred dollars a year.
All right.
Maybe.
Thank you.
The fee adjustment resolution.
This is a big one.
Buckle up.
Might be here as well, so in front of you is the resolution as it stands for your next council meeting. Obviously, it's flexible, I decided to break everything up in tables. So if you look through it, you'll see table A, table B, table C, table D, table E.
Yeah.
So if there's a table, you're like, you know, the council doesn't want to do this or whatever, then that's easy for us to change. Majority of these fees did not change. But we're putting all the fees in one spot, because what happens right now is we'll go and look for a fee. And you'll find a, you'll find a number, then you'll look at another fee, and it's in a separate resolution, but then. If there's so many, there's like five different revolutions, resolutions for pulling fees from, so this has every fee the city uses in one spot, so it's kind of also what we're doing is updating all the fees to be in one spot, so. Anyone that comes after us and go, hey, look at resolution six two eight, all the fees are there.
So we had so many fees that were organized then.
Yes, well, and the fees have been passed over years and years and years, I mean, all the way back to, I think, resolution three five nine was the first time we set, you know, a fee schedule. And so you have that one, you have four two eight, none of those got repealed, so that's the other thing that happened, we have. Four or five resolutions to set fees and none of them are appealed, so in truth, we could charge any of those fees what we should be charging. Just one, yeah, but it makes things a little confusing, so all the fees are listed here, I know we talked about individually ones, the only thing that you're gonna see new is the table B, I believe it is. Which is all of the parks and community centers. Rental rates and fees, those are brand new, and a public service committee, you have looked at those, but the rest of the council has not. Some of these fees are just restating the fees in this roster, some are new fees. Our communication recreation coordinator worked all these out kind of with surrounding areas, what was going on, what they charged, what we charged. The thing that we had seen a lot of is that over the time, our community center example this year, we spent about seventy to eighty thousand dollars in maintaining the community center this year. That's electric, that's, we're fixing things, whatever, we've only brought in about fifty thousand dollars of revenue, so we're about falling sixty-five thousand dollars short, that doesn't include staff time. So you have all the staff time that isn't calculated in that number, so we're, there's a huge gap, obviously, there's gonna be a gap, it's community centers both have a gap, but. How big does council want taxpayers to fund that gap, is your call. For some people, yes, come from us.
Refer to table B and the community center as well as the parks.
Yes.
Not seeing anything for. Blatant damage, I'm not talking about accidental damage, but you know, something occurs that you turn and you go, uh, no, you should not have had that fight there, breaking the tables, chairs, and whatever else. Where, what will cover those costs?
So there's that community center deposit. That is required, it could be put in this fee schedule, a deposit, but the deposit is fluctuated, I think, what's that now? Two fifty, so there's a deposit, and that's if you, something is damaged or broken, you would not get that deposit back, that's part of the community center rental. The parks don't have a deposit, I don't know if that's something council will be interested in adding, it could be as added to those, right, the parks should not have a deposit. Correct, so the parts we could add that if council would be interested in adding that, yes.
Okay, so I. I have had a couple of people reach out to me from the community about the about the park, I think, so the community center, I completely understand. So the park, if I understand, is going from zero to a hundred dollars, correct?
Correct, there is no cost around the park.
Correct, okay, so. The concern is, the people that reached out to me, they're saying, you know, they want to have a birthday party for their kid. And it's expensive already, and to throw out another hundred bucks is a lot of money, and the fact that it is a. You know, it is a city park, it's a community park. I guess it just, it does seem a little, it's like, you know, we're going from zero to a hundred, and a hundred dollars to some people is not a lot of money. Is there, was there any consideration about doing? Just like a deposit, like. A two hundred dollar deposit, if you mess everything up, you know, you don't get it back, but was there any discussion about that?
So I have, there's two parts to your question, I answered both, the first one is, it's still gonna be a first come, first served basis, so if you want to go and set up at a table, you can do that, and you're good. Now, if the park is completely rented out that day, then you wouldn't be able to go there and set up, because there's vendors and stuff. So someone having a birthday party, you can go and set up at a table, or set up in the pavilion if it's open, that's totally fine.
And not, and not.
And not pay, it's first come, first served, it's not reserved, it's only so very similar to, I'll just reference the rack. All the pavilions in the rack is first come, first served, but they can also be rented out, so if you go there and it's rented, and you see a time, you can't be there, but if it's not rented, you're first come, first served, you can go set up in the pavilion.
Oh, okay.
It's mainly for the bigger events and stuff.
Yeah, but I think it's confusing, because there was a post on Facebook, I don't know if people saw it, that has stirred up a lot of. A lot of stuff.
About these.
Yes, about the park fees, there's.
I didn't see the post, but I heard about it.
Oh, yeah, it's stirred up quite a bit.
What other comments are made on there?
Just that, that they can't, a lot of it was, they can't believe that the city is now gonna charge, and they're gonna go from zero to a hundred, but that makes sense, and I didn't realize that, so.
Yeah, the goal was, the big, the big event is, we have, we have to provide staffing, sure, the big events, it's, it's regardless of whatever happens, if that person brings staff or not, we're gonna provide staffing, because it's a city park.
Right.
And so we, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, but if a, if a parent says, you know, my child's birthday is on June first, and there's, you know, it's not barbecue rally, it's not anything, they can get up at five in the morning, whatever, go there. Stake it out, and they're good to go.
Exactly, okay, we've seen that happen now too.
And if it's booked, you put a little sticker saying this is reserved by?
Yeah, if we do a booking, we'll have a, I'm not sure how it'll look, like a signpost or something that says, today is barbecue rally, this park is reserved, so if someone comes and they go, I'm setting my birthday, they know they're gonna have to leave in three hours with the barbecue.
Council member has respectfully has handled it.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, again, in reference to the parks, I know like Yelm City Park, a lot of work was done to put in the sprinkler system, right there things, that's why we can't have the carnival rides on there anymore, because they're too heavy, they will create damage. Is the plumbing system for the sprinklers and everything, is it protected enough that if people come in, drive stakes, as you put it, you know, put up their canopies or anything else like that? Is it protected enough? Deep enough that those should not damage anything, or. Again, I'm just concerned about if somebody goes in there, throws in a one-foot stake, and lo and behold, it's the only spot that there's our pipe and. Or damages a sprinkler head or something like that, how do we go about protecting the taxpayers for something like that?
Yeah, well, the park rules don't allow you to drive stakes in there, sometimes there is a need, like some events will have a need for that. Like, hey, I, we're gonna have to set up a big stage, it's gonna be heavy, can you guide us, and then what we'll do is we can mark, the only part that's damaged normally is sprinkler heads.
Okay.
So we can mark the sprinkler heads before a truck comes in and drops off something, and then they can set it in between the sprinklers, that happened before, if a stage comes in or something like that, jazz fest, barbecue rally, they bring in a stage. So we mark them out with sprinklers, but a normal person, if they put down a tent and do sandbags, they're fine, it's when they drive the straight stakes down, they can hit a line, but stakes aren't allowed in the park rules. So we, we've been, everyone that's used it has been pretty good about not staking, I don't think, even this last year, we had anyone that staked any of their tents, they all put them on there, and they put weight on the.
Just trying, I'm looking at, starting to, you know, how do we go about protecting?
But that could have happened before, I mean, yeah.
No, but now we, we're starting to finalize, all these things are in place, I'm looking for, as he said, there was other resolutions, they may have been in those variety of resolutions, now we have one, one thing, and. It'd be nice to know, hey, you caused damage, and this is, you know, how we go about protecting and being able to. Make sure that we are watching out for the vandalism, or, you know, if somebody does something. That should not have been done, damages the park.
And the park rules are codified, so the part, like what you can and can't do in the park is code, council had passed it in the past, so we, we use that as a guidance, like, you know, no off-leash animals and non-off-leash areas, even though people do it. Once they have our dog park up and running, but there's stuff like no driving stakes, no driving vehicles, no.
Sliding down the fitness.
No, yeah, that one will have to be added.
You're actually having a little barbecue, aren't you?
Yes, there's no open fires, but you could have a barbecue charcoal, that would be allowed, you wouldn't be able to have a giant flame barbecue.
I. Back to signs and roofing here.
Yeah.
Two questions, number one is, if we roof commercial based on practical value, what is that rate? It's not made up in your head, like, oh, this is what the million, I want to charge um five hundred.
No, it's, it's per, per.
Values set.
I'll put the value in there the next time, it is a value set, I don't know the number on top, it is a value set.
Okay, then the second is, why is it a hundred and twenty-five for signs but only fifty for roofing? Why aren't those like, why the, why the difference there?
Uh, because sign, we have to check electrical, we have to go out there and make sure the sign. Yeah, there's.
This is electrical, okay. And that makes sense, I'm like, wait a second. So maybe.
Did you have something?
Why was back to the parks? I don't, maybe we should charge. Well, this is groups, yeah, or.
For individual way?
And it's like individuals.
But they're.
People.
The deposit, that's, that's different. I don't think we should charge a rental, if they want to reserve it, then they go through the channels to reserve it, but I don't think we should charge residents to. To use the parks. Or the gazebos or whatever. And even including the. The community center. Now, the commercial end of it, when businesses come in and use it, or. Big groups, yeah, that you have to do, but if. Joe Schmo that was on. Second, wants to. Use a gazebo, all you should have to do is pay, if there's a deposit, you do the deposit and reserve it.
But they said it's still first come, first served, and then.
No, I'll tell, if you want to reserve it, you could. Well, I just don't, I understand it's first come, first served, but let's say if. Josh wants to plan a birthday party on June fifteenth. At three o'clock from three to five. Josh. Should be able to walk into City Hall. If there's a deposit for it, pay the deposit and reserve it for that time period, but you live in the city, you should be able to use the damn thing without paying more for it. Now, it's different when. A group comes in or some corporate event or whatever the hell else is going on.
So regardless of, regardless of how many people are at this party.
Do you profit or? They're not the ones that paid the bills of that thing.
True.
No, I, I'm just looking for some clarification of the individual. Yelm City Park, hundred dollars. I can come in, and I can say, I get the whole park, here's a hundred dollars I want for one to six hours, and it's all mine. Or is it one little bench?
Can we let Lynn, because I know you had something you wanted to say earlier too.
So that really is focused more on events. Or which we want.
But someone could do it though, correct?
Do the whole park?
Yes.
Including the splash pad? And playground?
Not, not including the splash.
It's still a public park.
Right.
There's nobody that's gonna say. This is a private, it's still a public, there are still people who are, who will be there. It really is a more important fence that do. Create more work to maintain them.
So let's not refer to it as a group then, but an event, that's a different thing, because.
Yeah, it sounded like a.
Asking about that, it was stated during the whole discussion here, that anybody can come in and grab. A bench area where there's the seats or can go and grab something, but then if somebody says. Hundred dollars, whole park is mine.
Right.
Versus hundred dollars, the gazebo, the covered area, a hundred dollars for a benched area, a hundred dollar for a certain area, that's what I'm looking for clarification of is, what's that a hundred dollars give you?
And is there?
Because, because if somebody pays a hundred dollars. And somebody comes in and says, well, this little area wasn't reserved, it's like, no, 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 I paid a hundred dollars for the whole park.
That, that. So maybe it needs to be, because like I ran out a thing at Rainier Vista, the one shelter, and it's a hundred dollars, but I know they posted. Yeah, so.
And, and what I was gonna say earlier, when.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You said you could show up at five o'clock in the morning, stake your claim, you're good to go. Um, you said, you could show up at five o'clock in the morning, state your claim, you're good to go. Yes, uh, until that time that it is reserved.
Right, okay, and that makes sense.
If you show up at five o'clock, and you're saying, no, I'm gonna have a birthday party at one o'clock, right, there's a reservation at one.
So then, somebody, somebody wanting a birthday party, let's just say, they're trying to, you know, for young kids, I mean, they're not a whole bunch of pre-planning. They call you on Thursday and says, they could just call you and say, is anybody reserved the park on? Or whatever, on Saturday, and you can look and say yes or no, and they probably then have a good chance of getting it and getting it for free. I mean.
It, they could say, yeah, is the parkers are done on Thursday or Saturday?
From one to three.
One to three, I will look at the calendars and, no, there's nothing on the schedule, do you wanna book it? They'll say, I'll take my chances.
Right.
Perfect.
Right, and zero dollars.
I think, I think this whole thing really needs to be revisited, and not be the whole park. It needs, yeah, it needs to be.
To clarify.
If it's that cock, like, the only, the only time in the, the whole park would be, is a large event, and a large event should be paying a lot more than three hundred bucks.
Could we, uh, get information again on what the pending completion of proposed projects for the pavilions are? I don't, I don't think I was involved in that.
Um, so pavilions right now, public service committee is still kind of deciding what they wanna do with that, but kind of different ideas floating about what do pavilions? One large pavilion, four small pavilions, or no pavilions at all.
Oh.
And then, or some amalgamation of those three things, so, um, that's, we're still deciding, we haven't turned to that, if that's what this was in there, just a spot for us to build an add fee without having to change the entire reservation and creating those, which is just what they do.
Parks committee is gonna be meeting what next, on Monday?
Yeah, the Parks Advisory Committee meets Monday, the Parks Public Service Committee won't be until January.
Yeah, and they'll be given, I mean, obviously, it's a council decision, but, um, they give advisory, you know, advice to us, and so they'll be making recommendations of all of it.
And then same, you'll see with the gazebo as well, the Cochrane Park gazebo is being built in the next phase of Cochrane Park, which we expect sometime next year. That's a, designed to be a wedding venue, like a big, large gazebo, so that one, we'd have to grab a pricing for that, cause it is a, it's gonna have power, lights, every, it'll be a wedding venue, is our, well, so, I, I'm kinda hearing that people want, the council wants, um, more parameters on what is allowed, what is.
Well, I was gonna say, would it hurt them more open parameters, like, an event is an event, that's an event. Anybody else, if the park is free, you use the park, and you don't, you don't have to pay for it, and the idea of a deposit that you pay and get back, that sounds like a lot of administrative headache.
The only, the only place where I think the deposit is appropriate is the community center.
That's fine, but I mean, just to go on the grass and use the park.
But I think the average person in town, if they wanted to use the community center for some, for some reason, for their family, they shouldn't have to pay anything either. Yeah, I think the only time we should be charging something is commercial use, which, or corporate function, meetings, that kind of crap.
But no, other people outside of the city.
Or outside of the city, if you have a Yom address, you're a Yom citizen.
It's inside the city limits, or?
Well, I don't know how we determine that. If you have, if you have a city water bill, and you're using it for a personal reason, you shouldn't have to pay a fee to reserve it.
What about like a minimal fee, just, there is a lot of costs upkeep on it, and of course, you know, tax for money paid for the building, and everything like that.
Well.
But it costs money to clean, it costs money to, to set up, all that stuff, it pulls away our staff from whatever they're doing at Public Works to do that, or whoever.
And when you're saying a family, is there a certain number of attendees that you're thinking of? Cause if it's like over twenty-five people, I would, I
I've.
I would expect there would be money.
Parks with fifty plus people, and we cleaned up after ourselves, and didn't leave a mess for anyone.
The parks and the community center are different, I, you know, cause that's a building, and you've got power, you've got to, you've got all that stuff, the upkeep. I don't know, I think the fee for that is, is small fee.
You gotta get the gist of what the council's looking at here, um, I'll work with Lynn and Cody to kinda.
But a big thing on the parks is specify.
Yeah.
But it's, it's for the, the, each pavilion.
Understood.
And if we're not charging for that, would we have enough money to do better than we are now, with, with the gap?
Would, so like, I'm hearing kinda same thing, is, it sounds like the one thing you guys are okay with is an event charge for large events that are in the park, that are making profits. So we, if we narrow, I mean, and we can dive into this, cause I wanna make sure we get the, we can dive into this next year and really go into the individual prices, but if we just had a rent a park for an event, and put a straight number that if you're renting for an event that's large, and have that as a line for any of the parks, that would lock it in.
I would try to figure out some sort of scale as far as size of it.
Yeah.
Cause there's gonna be a big difference between.
Viking festival.
Yeah, instead of nonprofit, individual, and commercial, let's do attendee sides.
That's gonna be harder to do too, though, it's what anticipated, um, actual, uh, actual.
A, a good event coordinator should be able to generally have an idea of the attendance they're expecting.
Based on vendor size.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you an example, we had an example of, of someone this year, where there we set a number, like, at the threshold, you need to start doing these things, and the person said, well, I meant nine, 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 I was like, oh, okay, nine, 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 every time it was nine, 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 we never hit a thousand, and there was definitely more than a thousand people. And so I wanna make sure that we don't have an arbitrary threshold, someone can just say a number, and then they go, sweet, I don't have to do that, because I'm under that number. So, that would be my only concern, um, the other one is Longmire Park, we do a sports rental, so there's a sports rental rig fee, that we have for Longmire Park, so if council doesn't wanna do this, I will bring back the Longmire that we already currently have established, and just keep that, because baseball field, we have to buy chalk, we have to buy stuff to do that, so I'll make sure we keep the Longmire Park in there, if we're not gonna bring this in.
What does that look like right now?
Um, I know it's not on here, but it's, it's really cheap, it's like six dollars an hour for a game, twenty an hour for tournament. It's really, really cheap, so we have, we, we meet with all that, though. Yeah, we spend a lot more money on Longmire, but that's okay, because it gets a lot of use of the baseball league and soccer team now, and even, um, the Lions Club use it for movies in the parks, we get a lot of use out of it, which is great, um, and the fees, this would have been very similar to what the fees they were paying. And we normally do at the beginning of the year, we go through, like, how many games are you gonna have to do, schedule, and then we price out with it.
Which is the intent, we don't want charter system a lot of money, it's, you know, that's, I think that's the intent for James, what he's going after, you know, helping the people that live here.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's, my, I, I think one of the things that, with clarification, that really helped me out, and I'll just stick with Yon City Park, I've been to other parks where there's specific, like, I won't say roped off areas, but it's like, this is your area that you do rent, you pay, you know. Cause there's covered, and various other things, where, and it's, you know, that kind of thing, with Yon City Park, we don't have any really markings. You gotta, one big covered area, and now you have, I think, there's like four, four-seater bench seats around a tree and other things, I think one of the things that would be very helpful, if we're going to do fees, not just for Yon City Park, but for all the other parks. We have to have a way that we can mark off, what is it that you, that, that's your space, that you can all of a sudden go get that person, oh, out of here, they were not invited to my event, they're not part of, they're not part of my birthday party, or my retirement event, or whatever it is. You can't be here, you know, we need to, if, cause that's, when you're renting something, you're saying, this is mine, this is, you know. In, in an open space, there are no four walls and roof.
But, but even like, okay, so Evan again, use Rainier Vista, um, and I just rent that out for a club function, because Yon doesn't have enough parking. But, um, you know, we, yeah, so we have the big pavilion, and then there's grass all around it, but we don't kick people out, I mean, it's still a public park, so you have to be, but, but people, they pretty much know, they're not gonna come into the pavilion and eat our food. Right, I mean.
You would hope not, but that, but you have, but what is, but if you.
I understand what you're saying, I mean, it's. Yeah.
I, that's what council.
It would be what you're, if someone pays to rent it or reserve it, they're reserving whatever pavilion.
Yeah, that's.
Not, not square footage.
You're talking about the actual, like, city park.
Right, not, you know, like Yon City Park.
Currently, there is.
Certainly, it says a hundred dollars, I get a hundred dollars, the whole park is mine, so I have an event.
So we, that needs to be.
Yeah, and that's.
And that's what I'm wondering, is where we, and even for those who hold an event, what is their limit, that they go, this is roped off for, you know.
And that's what we've been talking about, that's what.
And then, if we take away all the pavilions, we won't know any of it.
Right. Garbage takes away, and water use, like that kind of stuff?
Yeah, and power, um, those are the.
And the bathrooms will be open?
Mm-hmm, so one of events, so right now, what happens, or what should happen when the event comes is, um, the event, they come to us, they come to Lynn. Um, she kind of vets the event, and then we give them some parameters, and they meet with us, and we kinda go over setup and everything, we line out what their event's gonna look like. And then we work with them, and they work with the city for the next three, four months as they get to their event. That's normally kind of the setup and how it works, sometimes it's not that great, sometimes it's, hey, I got an event, and I wanna do it in two weeks, we're like, ah. And then we try to, they, normally, we help them out, we haven't had any event in the park that has not followed our rules and kind of done things. There's people that pushed back and wanted to kind of go against them, but everyone's followed the rules and kind of helped us and worked with us, and called if they needed help, and vice versa. It just, it gets to the point where some, where our, it's a lot of staff time to go and man these events on a weekend, so we're paying overtime or comp time for people to be at the events. Because we want the park to still look pristine, and we don't, and if they don't have any staff to work the park, we know that the park isn't gonna look pristine. So that's always our goal, when these events happen, is we're gonna have people there to make sure the park looks well, we just wanna make sure we recruit.
It's usually not the group that gets blamed, it's the city that gets.
Well, they have no one to help support it, so, and that's normally how it works. But I, so it'll, it sounds like what I'll do is, we'll keep the current, because we have a current rate structure for community center, we have a current rate structure for Longmire Park. Those exist already, you guys already passed, so I will just bring those into this, and then we'll keep diving into the community center park discussion to go forward. There's a lot of events coming up next year, and we were trying to figure out this before those events happen, so what, um, the current resident, the current way it works is council has to approve the event in the park, so any event that comes to park, have to come to the council, and you have to approve it on the consent agenda. If you remember, you know, we had, last year, we had all the events came at one time, and you guys approved them all at once, so that'll probably be the way we'll continue it if council's not on board with passing.
But, let's see if we can, I mean, we have, I, I think we can still get this done. Um, we're not that far apart, I don't think, if we add what the council's been saying with the boundaries, with.
Parameters, what did those hundred bucks buy me?
I mean, it's, this is next week too, though, so we're gonna have to really get on it.
We have to submit it tomorrow, that's the agenda package.
We'll, we'll work on that, I, I.
It just. There'd be, it needs to be more specific when it comes to the parks. What it is, is, you're not, like, with these things, you're not, it's not that you're renting the entire park, you're reserving this.
The big long building.
Whatever.
And do they specify on the facility use, how many attendees they expect?
No, we don't ask them, uh, the current facility or park rental thing has, like, what parts do you want, pavilions, kitchen? The kitchen doesn't exist anymore, so it's that pad up top, um, bathrooms, playground area, I think, there's a couple spots where you check things that you want in the park. And that's the only park that has anything, um, has a checklist, the other parks, Cochrane does not, we, I mean, we hadn't had any events at Cochrane Park until this year. This is the first year we had events at Cochrane Park, and they did extremely well, and they all wanna come back, which is great, and they did a really good job taking care of the park, it was awesome. Cochrane, uh, but there's no way to recuperate, I mean, it took a little bit of staff time picking up garbage and stuff, for him, that wasn't a big deal. Longmire Park, same thing, we had events there, which we don't have an event list, we just have sports. So we tried to just kind of like, well, you're using the baseball fields, we'll charge you what the baseball team would have used, if you're setting up, uh, festival. So it's just trying to figure out how to get those costs, when like baseball team pays, but this event doesn't really have a scale, how do they pay? They're just trying to figure out, how do we get that money, and how do we recruit that staff time that's being used?
But everything else, though, all the other fees, rates, like that.
When do we expect to see regarding events next year?
Um, anytime, I mean, those come in all the time, though, don't they? Yeah, but if we do this correctly, I, we won't have to do every single one, like approve every A, B, and C, it'll be standardized. You fit the mold, you can do it, you know, you follow the, the rules and expectations that council lays out here. But yeah, we'll try to do it, we'll try to, um, incorporate this stuff if we can tomorrow, if not, we'll probably push back to January. Um, but I, I think we're pretty close, and obviously, it's just staff doing this, not me, but, um, I, I think we're pretty close to it, or we can maybe get in it next week, if not, we'll, um, we'll just take it off, but, um, either way, we'll watch council now.
I would like, I know you guys, just really quick, the other tables, because there was CD and E, I know you focused a lot on the community center park. CD and E were kind of different fees, we had talked about those, if you noticed on the court fees, I put if they win the tow hearing fee, there, the money will be returned to them, that was something I had heard expressed.
Thank you.
Um, and I kind of clarified that the civil PL fees, criminal fees, we don't actually set those, and the reason why we wanted to say follow county fee schedules, county sets those prices. So right now, we set them at a price, and we have to keep charging that, even though county is charging us more. So we put in there, follow county, then the money adjusts whenever county adjusts their fees, and same with passport fees, instead of setting a price, we just follow the Department of State fee schedule, and then they just tell us what the money is, so I just wanna make sure you guys are okay, cause those are new fees as well, CD and E. Um, he was that video redacting charge for the cameras.
Which fee?
Down our utility fees, it's late fee, five dollars, and right now, we don't charge anything.
It's been that way for.
You sent another notice?
We sent paper notices, so the biggest thing that's costing us is noticing, sending paper notices, phone calls.
Cause they go out sometimes, and stuff.
Yeah, emailers, emailers, so it just sends, it's, costs us more money.
Listen, you're late, you pay.
Also, you have to think about it, we're not supposed to give up funds, right?
Right.
So if somebody is two months late on their utility bill, we're basically giving them credit.
Right.
For that, so it doesn't, to the public, it's, we're not, we're recouping something for lending that credit of two months or.
Interest.
How, how would anyone ever get two months behind on the bills, they'll have connection.
Oh.
They still have the connection, they just can't use it. And this, well, minus the sewer, the sewer, we can't shut off, so they, we have people that haven't paid their bills in four or five years. Yes, that can still flush their toilets, because we can't legally shut the sewer off.
How many people are resident, or at homes, or?
Three, five hundred.
There is, there is quite a few, that, and we can't, we're not legally allowed to shut off the sewer, because it creates an ecological. They don't pay their water bills, they don't have water, but they still can flush their toilet, so they can just dump water in their toilet. Yeah, I mean, buy water, dump water, and I don't know what they do, I don't go to their houses, and, how are you flushing your toilet, sir, or ma'am? Yeah, it is unfortunate.
It's a hassle, I.
So table C though.
Yeah.
So late fees are any, so table C, I said it looks good, what'll happen when you see the resolution is you won't see the up from, I just wanted to put that, so you guys could see what the original price was. So those will disappear, and you'll just see the numbers, um, table D, everybody was good with all those?
Let's go back to you real quick, I, I don't wanna explain more issues, but, um, there was a couple people, or maybe one, that talked about the new count setup. From zero to twenty, just wanna make sure that everyone's on board.
I thought we were.
It's not just a simple thing, if I walk in there, give, write down my name and go to the, turn on my water, was, somebody had to go out there do, uh, meter, meter reading to say when it started, somebody had to input into the system that was not.
Yeah, that's custom business, it's like, if you called up Xfinity, and they charged you an amount, just.
They do, because I just literally just.
Then you talk to the wrong person.
They, they charge.
It is negotiated, and.
Well, this is something, though, that, it, it sounds like there's a couple people that don't want it, um, I'm not hearing them.
I'm outnumbered, we're good.
Okay, all right, we'll leave that on, move on.
Twenty bucks.
Okay. Table D? Issues, table D? Yep, we did change that, cause the council's, um, what council wanted on the bill here. Yeah, it's that last one, yeah, public records request, I think that's.
I do have a lingering question, and you mentioned, like, the movies, and one of you mentioned the movies in the park, um, this past year. Were they charged the fee for using Longmire?
We did not charge.
Okay. Got it.
I have a question. We have a permit, uh, picture.
Where at?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah, those are current, those aren't new, those are already in place.
What if, is that a new instruct, new, new construction? If that my house, I decide I wanna swap out my faucet. If that my house, I decide I want to swap out my faucet, technically I'm supposed to get a permit.
No, this is new construction.
This is for the incoming, in other words, uh, when, if you have a house. That has never been on the system, it's forty dollars plus whatever that fixture of putting in the meter and everything else. Once, once past the meter, we do whatever you want.
So is that, so is that forty dollars for every fixture in the house?
That's forty dollars plus fixture fees. So forty dollars for just getting a plumbing permit and then you save seven dollars for fixture. So like what they'll do is when your plans come in, your housing plans, so, be like your housing plans ago, you have five sinks. It's thirty five bucks, so you pay seventy five dollars for your plumbing. And that's because we do a plumbing inspection. And that's new construction. Now, if you wanted to go and like install a new bathroom in your whole house, you should technically.
What they see is for is they.
The majority of them are paying the inspectors time to look at that, yeah, they are.
Anything else? The ADA is Cody, is Pat, Pat online or?
I'm me.
Oh, what says Pat?
It is, it was Pat.
It's me. Um, so I'm gonna cover two things. So this, me, as you guys know, council, you passed the ADA transition plan contract and a local road and safety plan contract. Um, but I wanted to just kind of tell you why we did those things, because a lot of times it's why are you doing this? Why is this? So Pat wrote me up a nice little script. I will read it to you. Um, because his words are better than mine's a lot. So it's two different ones. So I'm gonna talk about ADA transition plan, a local road and safety plan that'll answer questions.
So we passed this before we knew what it was all about.
So ADA transition plans have been a requirement for local agencies since nineteen ninety four. We've done these before. Recent surveys show mixed results of the plans being completed and implemented. The Federal Highway Administration. And other stakeholders have recently emphasized this requirement and have determined that beginning in twenty twenty three, to be eligible for future federal funds. Local agencies will have to be compliant with the ADA transition plan in place. So that's why we did it, because we have to, we have federal funds, we want to keep getting those funds. The ADA transition plan consists of the following elements, a list of physical barriers located within cities right of ways, a detailed descriptions of methods to remove these barriers. Schedule to implementing these steps, a schedule for providing upgraded sidewalks, and a record of opportunity given. An ADA transition plan for City Elm is currently prepared by King Technologies of Rochester, Washington through professional service agreement signed with King Technologies on November second. Once complete, the plan will be presented to city council for adoption. Expect in mid twenty twenty three. Yeah.
So you and Joe talk so fast.
It's back to what we said, need to be.
Yeah, yeah. So the idea with this is, so the ADA is your access to your sidewalk. And how people that don't maybe have full mobility are able to transition those sidewalks and move from spot to spot. So the transition plan guides us, looks at sidewalks, look at areas that maybe don't have that transition or ADA compliance and tells us how to fix them. And then we implement those and then we do it and then we get federal funding. Cheers.
In reference to what's going to be presented to us. The consultants, they are looking at everything and they're going to tell us what changes need to be made.
Correct. So what will come out of this will be like, you'll see a map of Yelm with probably red, green, yellow. And it'll be yellow is stuff that is close to detriment or partially detrimental, green is great and red is stuff that ADA people cannot use correctly or transition. So it'll be a big help in knowing those things to start that process. Um, this one's not that much. This one. The money we're gonna make, I think it's thirty thousand total, but they do an assessment of all the sidewalks in Yelm, they look at all the stuff. Um, but the amount of money we get in federal funding outweighs that every, I mean, we got. How much in federal funding, eight hundred and ninety thousand just for the dog park.
Does it include school district uh offices and like all those buildings as well?
The sidewalks that go in front of them, yes, it won't go into the school area itself.
Got it.
Yeah.
I would have done it for twenty five. I would.
Maybe next time.
Like hey, that, that sidewalk, that needs to be ground down like that.
So local road and safety plan, the other one, um, we're required to approve a local road and safety plan on hand in order to be eligible for some state transportation funding. For projects containing any safety related items. The local road and safety plan is a risk way to identify and prioritize locations for roadway improvements. So this is moving from sidewalks to the road. Um, this process includes analyzing of crash data, identification of potential countermeasures and creating a prioritized list of roadway locations or safety factors are present. Um, a local road and safety plan for City of Yelm, Washington is currently being prepared by SCJ Alliance. You guys approved this on November second as well. And once complete, it'll come to you guys probably early twenty twenty three. This one is more about, so if you have an intersection like, say Crystal Springs, you're like, man, cars are flying up and down, it's a horrible incident. This will tell you like, yes, it is, this is what you can do to fix that. Or this intersection needs to, a traffic light to help move stuff around because people are getting wrecks here. This intersection is great. Do more stuff like this, or this needs a roundabout. Or a merging diamond.
Do they also look at the timing of the lights and things?
They won't, because we don't control any of the lights.
We already know the intersections are issues, why are we paying someone to tell us what we already know?
You're not allowed, so just because you know you're not allowed to make an adjustment to the intersection, you have to prove that the intersection is doing something wrong.
You stand there and look at it.
Yeah, I agree with you. If someone needs to stand there and look at it, that has.
Has traffic been running better with what we got face with thirty?
No, then these are all intersecting the entire town. So it's not just, so I know what you're thinking is like, I can stand there and go, man, traffic's really bad, it's five P M, fix this. But they're gonna come out there and go, traffic's bad at five P M, here's where the cars are coming from, here's what you can do to improve it. Here's things you can do and they can prove that to state, so we can actually make those adjustments. I can't, we can't just go out and stick stop signs or we'll get sued. We have to like do. You can't just go.
We would get sued for sticking a stop sign on a city street.
If you stick a stop sign on the street that hasn't been studied and a car wreck happens, you can be sued for that. Yeah, if you stick a stop sign on the street. They can be like, I think I'm, you know, I think.
Stop a triangle sign, this is. I forget. New, new, new traffic.
Deer crossing.
Something ahead or whatever.
Oh, traffic revision.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know how you do a traffic revision though, you need.
If you go in a new stop sign, throw the new tra, the traffic revision ahead, you stick that down there for a couple of months, you're good to go.
True, but you need.
Eventually people figure out there's a stop sign.
I agree with you, but you need to have proof that the stop sign is gonna work there. You can't just make, you can't build a.
Anyone wondering why so much money gets pissed off.
Uh, this, uh, this report.
Uh, this one, it'll be in early twenty twenty three. Yeah, you'll have it in early twenty twenty three, it should be in next few months, it's a pretty quick area.
Do you have something or were you just?
No, 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 I'm just listening.
Okay, any more questions? So be free. Okay, council member initiatives. Do mayor's report.
Um, decent amount of updates. I know that maybe it's some, some council members are gonna bring up, but. Want to talk briefly about the Algiers, near Algiers Road, um, right by where the old video fantasies be, um. Right by the post office, that, it's a private road. On, a lot of people think it's a city road, it's not a city road, yeah, with a big pothole right in front of the post office.
It's canyons.
And um, they are closing that road, it's a private road, they're closing it. Um, it's gonna be closed here right next.
The tenth that said.
Next week.
Oh, they're fixing it, no.
There was a sign.
Or they're just gonna close. Cause they don't want to fix it.
And so we are. So we're gonna announce, you know, make sure the public knows about it and um all that on Facebook and social media and all that stuff. Um, this isn't a city road again, so we don't have much control on that.
So just to clarify.
Yeah.
It's not a city road.
Correct.
So even if they closed it and people rode on it anyway. The cops can't really do anything about it, most of the owner wants to call.
Are they gonna let like the?
I mean, I don't know about that, but.
They're going barricaded.
Gonna say stop, they don't even want to take the amount of month, they don't even want to patch some potholes. You think they're gonna pay to put some barriers up?
They'll put some barriers up, um, I think there's some conditions, the city, not much, but the city has to have the older like access or. Stuff like that. Um, but other than that, one give a heads up.
Is it eco blocks that they're using?
They're using concrete.
Not too.
Are we gonna decide what we're gonna do?
That's what they're called.
What's that?
Are we gonna decide if we want to do something with that? We're gonna have to talk about whether we want to do the purchase of it, make it a city road.
I don't think it is at this point, but.
That they wanted to sell it to us.
You have some brothers and some back from this. Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay, next.
Any other questions on that before we move on?
Yeah, Jesus, let's quiet it. I wasn't gonna bring it up at this meeting.
Will we be talking about it? Yeah, absolutely, we can talk about it. Um, if you guys want to talk about it, absolutely, um. There's interest in purchasing it. Um, first, before anything's done, we should probably do a study though, in which we're already kind of looking at. Um, determine how much it would cost for the city to upgrade it to standard city standards.
That's, that's what we need before we talk about is the cost. We backed that a little bit more.
What's that?
That same road they're gonna close.
I thought we moved on to something else.
So it's a sizable amount, um, but we can absolutely have this conversation though and we'll. Probably will at a recent, in a near study session. I don't think it's, um, you know.
I would, yeah, in January, I would say we put that on the agenda.
But then was there talk of possible state funding and their possibility?
Yeah, we could absolutely go for states. Put this in perspective, six hundred fifty thousand dollars is another street for us too, like a, another street. Um, sidewalks, streets. But they was. Isn't a born street, well, wouldn't they?
You're gonna find out, we'll quick count it, point it is, I'll tell you that.
Given who those guys are, they probably built something and developed that whole area.
And that's what, yeah, that's another part of it, it's. We can have this conversation though in a study session and um. Want to put this on the January study session?
Please. Were you listening?
So also, as uh, many of you know, the Christmas parade was canceled and all that, got a lot of flack for it. Um, there's a lot of different reasons, mainly their biggest reason was the lack of participation in it for um. For different floats and all that. The other secondary was because football team went to state one and. The police escort out of the. No, separate thing, so. So Christmas apart, some, there were gonna be people in the parade that were um part of the school, cause the bands, cause whatever. So that would have been maybe even less than what we would have had. I think maybe what it doesn't or so probably if that. Yeah, um, very small. It costs a lot to put these on, a lot of planning logistics go involved or involved in planning these parades. So those are some of the reasons. Um, we did an after action report today and we'll have some more um coming up. About not only the parade, but um how Christmas in the park went. There's a lot of things that we're gonna do differently next year and we're already starting planning on it. Just right now, can we get um a lot better? It was good, excuse me, it was good, but we're gonna make it even better, um, doing. I've taken note from some of the council members that reached out to me one on one, saying what they would like and they didn't like about it. So we're gonna incorporate that and um, yeah, but moving to the football celebration. Which is something that a lot of folks have also been hearing about, um, wanting a parade for the football folks that first time the. City of Yelm, Yelm tornadoes have gone to state championships and won. Um, it, well, to make it a state and then to win it, it's huge accomplishment. One of the things we're doing next week, we'll um be having a resolution forum, celebrate um some of the, some of the athletes that will be in tennis as well. Um, we had a meeting with them yesterday with the schools, um, see what we could do to. Recognize these students and also the community members and the businesses that supported them as well. And likely, uh, this is, none of this is finalized yet, this is really discussions. Um, have something, a celebration in middle of January. Where we celebrate the students, not just the band, all of the other groups too. Anyway, so with that. Right, what the city is gonna do though is um, put a banner, congratulations, you know, city, um, young tornadoes. And little things like that, just to recognize it on the city level. So the um proclamation and a banner, that's kind of our. What we're doing right away and then the celebration, um, schools, community will happen in January. Questions on that? Yeah.
Um, for the Christmas in the park, I really think we could do better on those hot dogs.
Yeah, I was hoping for, uh, just, yeah, still, yeah, we're, we're gonna do better on that too. I know, it's. I like a little more gourmet food.
We're at the color of this table.
That's what they're supposed to be.
Organic.
No, they were. They were tofu dogs.
They were?
Yeah, we're a lot healthier these days.
Uh, if somebody gonna approach the Donna about her, uh, the idea. Parade, that was because you want to.
I don't think it needs, we need to reach out to her, but if she wants to do.
Oh, you're gonna do it.
She said she's.
Anyway, I, we need to bring attention, yeah, Brian.
In reference to the football celebration. I'm just, it's just a little concern I have is how much is, other than the city banner and proclamation, what else is the city? Considering doing, cause I think this is, I, I think it's a great feat, but it's the young community schools. And it needs, they need to be the forefront of it. If there's any cost other than the city banner and proclamation, they need to be putting that money up. More than the city, because, okay, cause I, my concern is that Yelm is a small portion of young community schools.
Yep, yeah, they're taking the lead on it, we're just helping out. We'll do a police escort, stuff like that.
Okay, no, I, I, yeah, very. I just want to make sure we aren't all sudden fronting something that is not.
I might help with some fireworks or something like that. No, it's, it's very minimal cost, I, I under, understand.
Is there a landing spot for this parade? Like usually then everybody has to hear.
Yeah, there's been some that have been, uh, that we need to make sure though that the schools are on, um, they get confirmation for, for you certain. I'm just trying to let Kelsey know, just what, what. Yeah, there'll be more details as the weeks um go on.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anything else on those? Um, just lastly. Intersection field is some of you may have seen, um, here where the power went out, that was due to transformer going out. Top caught fire or something, um, but basically the transformer failed, it doesn't usually happen, but it did. Um, they had to replace the, the pole and the transformer. It wasn't something, the city had nothing to do with this, just. Put that out there first. Um, P S E was very, very good at keeping us in. Um, up to date with what's going on, the current status of it, so we appreciate that. Um, but. Something that we might consider, we are considering, um. Cause it was, it was just pitch black, so we're considering buying maybe some four way stops. It, this shouldn't happen all the time. Granted, but in case of this, an emergency like this, we, we do think that we should um have something. Either a traffic signal, um, temporary traffic signal like stop signs, that don't let up. Your stop sign. Good point, well, we know it's illegal about it. But yeah, do something like that, or um if you can't get it, if it happens right away, you can consider putting a police officer out there controlling traffic and stuff like that. But yeah, this.
So helpful with the community, well, the.
What's that?
So P S E is so community oriented.
They are.
Seen their commercials? We, we should get a, maybe they should uh put up that traffic sign for us.
I mean, yeah, I, this doesn't happen often.
Yeah, so they, it's gonna happen often enough, I don't think. Justified, yeah.
Yeah.
Speaking about it, uh, cause there was no officer there, we're quite. I think we need to have a response on why it took so long for an officer to get.
We determined it wasn't gonna be, um, first of all, we, we did discuss it right away about having an officer on there. We weren't, we had one planned for the morning of Monday for that. Any traffic flow. At the time, it was during the weekend, we didn't think, um, it. We only have so many officers, obviously, you know, so we would have had to pull one in over time, bring it out, um. If we could have got someone out there first of all, and then, um, it would have been slow during the nighttime. It.
Well, it's just. We also could, but we also could have reached out to, because that's five ten, five oh seven.
State Patrol.
State Patrol should have also been reached out to, to provide somebody to help us out. Because I read some of the things that were going on, uh, people just running through the intersection. And we got very lucky that there was no major incident that caused a lot of damage and loss of life. So we need to seriously, you know, no, it doesn't happen that often, but we need to have some kind of plan.
And that's what, that's what I just talked about. I am just always stops by in patrol officer, if this happens in the future, this is a good, um. Learning experience. I mean, this hasn't, I don't think this happened for, uh, intersections feel like this for that long, but, um, and you know, it was probably less than. It was definitely less than forty hours, but yeah, well received. We are running from it. We are, um, we're gonna do the four way stops, purchase of signs. Um, if it happens on a busier time, um, and it was determined it wasn't as busy during those, um, they were all peak hours for traffic. Uh, I, I, I did see some of the traffic and I get there was a small percentage of people that were blowing the stop sign. Uh, well, as a, it's supposed to be treated as a four way stop, some people were blowing it, not many were, um, but. I mean, most people were doing it the proper way, but, um, if you don't know the rules and the traffic laws in Seattle, Washington, it doesn't help, you shouldn't drive. Um, but yeah, well received, um, doesn't worry us and we will, um, we'll discuss further on it, but we're likely to order those. I like that, huh? Thank you, Josh. Yeah.
He's got a good point, those are, it's, it's two city routes, state law.
State Patrol should came out.
Yeah.
Did we contact State Patrol on that or when they have?
State Patrol would come on, they turn it over to us and we do have all the public records of certified players, obviously have police officers that are players, so. Have the ability to flag, it's just that you gotta, you gotta weigh out how long it's gonna be, and it was a lot of mixed messaging as far as when it would be fixed. And it's gonna be fixed early and then it got pushed out and it kept bumping, kept bumping, so. I talked to the police officers a couple times over the weekend, they were prepared to help out, like you said, Monday morning. Um, you know, the issue is, like you'd said, you treat it like a four way stop, that is the law. The law is you treat it like a four way stop, and so. You know, in reality, yes, to help traffic flow through there, yes, but to make sure. You know, people treat it like a four way stop, shouldn't have to have an officer in the middle telling people to treat it like a four way stop.
My, my, my concern is that. Why did we not at all put anybody out there after forty eight hours? Until on Monday, on, on a particular Monday morning, when traffic is all of a sudden starting. Okay.
That's why.
But he also said they came up, they have a plan.
My concern is. What, why did we not have something? You know, how long, how long were we willing to wait before?
Monday morning.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm, as I said, it's just there was, there was still, you may not. Monday morning may not be, is not only the peak time, but also Sunday evening is peak time. Because people are returning home from wherever they went. And, you know, we, it's, at what point did we sit there and go, well. Intersections out, power's out, everybody knows the law, four way stop and, oh, this is a major intersection of five ten, five oh seven. Downtown center of Yell that backs up traffic of how many cars that. We've all sat there on a Sunday trying to get from. High school to Safeway because everybody is returning home from Mount Rainier.
Did you steal that duck or was? I, it wasn't.
I'm just saying, we.
No, but it's, I, I, I guess I feel like we may need to move forward because it, it happened, it was bad. There were, they had no control over it. I agree that there probably should have been an officer. Um, when I went through it, it wasn't bad. I mean, I know the law. And they have a plan or they're working on a plan going forward, so.
I, I looked at the worst, I mean, I, I went out there multiple times. Worst I saw it was at the bowling alley and that was on Sunday evening. Um, but other than that, it worked for the, for the most part. I saw the vast majority of people stopped and treated as a four way, um, light or four way stop. Um, we, we did make that, I mean, sometimes those decisions are hard, you know, what, what, whether or not to put an officer out there, spend the money on it. Um. We determined, you know, that if, if it was needed, it wa- it wasn't forty eight hours. Um, the, it was Saturday, early Saturday morning. Um, when it went out and Sunday night is when it went, um, when it got completed, where the, um, P S E finally fixed it, but. We would have done it if we would have put an officer out there on Friday or Monday morning. Just to help with the flow to the biggest traffic, but yeah, we get it. Um, like I said, it's a good learning experience for us. Um, in the future, we probably will. We might do it earlier, it, it all depends, all situational too, like, you know, top settings. We were getting, we're told it was gonna be such and such time, so. I mean, it, it's just a kind of, um.
General, P S E tells you it's gonna be back on by X time, times that by five.
Yeah.
We were fortunate that nothing made you happen though.
But we learned from it, we didn't have to act for it on it, we got it, um, we're, we're doing better on it, so we will be better in the future. Yeah. And that, um, I wanna end on pause now, how about, um? I don't think I mean. Yeah, there's nothing positive to say, um, we'll do better. No more tofu dogs. Um, gosh, I want to hear the council member initiatives now, how about that?
All right, Josh.
Um, I'm not so much in nature, but question, are you ready to sell that voting for Cody? That you call the snow making machine? Yeah, you ready to sell that yet?
You, did you want a snow making machine?
I don't know, I can't use it, so probably not. Somebody might, you got money back on that.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
The city has a snow making machine. It hasn't been used in, yeah.
We did, we didn't buy it this year, this is before.
You made like for snow cones?
No, to make snow.
Oh, to make snow.
Last year was not, this year has not been this again.
We made snow in Poland, and then this year we did, we did times, we made snow that, um, the Friday nights. Before.
Cross country scheme.
I mean, so, um, I, coworkers just tested.
Interesting.
Okay, in the future, like. Obviously, this is not that I'd wanna buy, but since we have it, I think we could do some fun things with it, maybe like do a.
We should if it works.
If it's cold, if it's cold enough, that's the thing. If the weather is dry and it's cold. If it's raining and it's warm, it's not gonna work, but.
That's why it's a big moving here.
Do you have anything else?
Um. Well, we're gonna push that next conversation. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I wasn't sure if I was gonna bring this up or if the mayor was, but, um. Getting the homelessness task force together, I thought, I thought we were gonna talk about that.
Yeah, go for it.
I'm talking about it.
If you want.
I'm totally talking.
If you want, yeah. You brought it up.
It's the three of us are in there, Blair, Crossman and myself, and I feel like. Right now is an important time for us to get back together or together. The, for the first.
I'm glad you.
Have you guys been in on one before? No, so none of us have had a meeting for the homeless task force before, so maybe just having one to start. What do you guys see?
Yes, you need them.
Shoot an email and schedule one?
You know, you know, on that, um, note, um.
Uh, here? Tomorrow?
No.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where? I threw it down too.
Leaving a couple, oh, it's Christmas time, um. Tune in, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Um, one thing to note on that, Ashley is the chair on this, but we, cause of our, um. Um, I don't see bylaws, but the proclamation that we passed on council, it is two council members on there. Um, so voting at least, so you two are still the voting members on that committee or task force, Ashley is the chair. Um, she'll run it and all that stuff, but you two are the actual votes on it too, so. So she'll set the agenda and do all that stuff.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll do that, thank you. Anything else? That, that was top of my list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Brian?
I was gonna shade some stop sign, but I'm just kidding.
Yes, I have two things. Um, I'm not the only one that was asked about this, but I don't want, I wanted to go back and revisit the gentleman that asked about the bathroom signs in the library. Did anybody answer him? Uh, what are we gonna do? What do we think?
I saw Cheryl, the other, the exec director for the T R L the other day too, I didn't bring it up, I forgot, um. You know, we can.
I was inside, talked to, uh, some people about it, it's, it's policy about T R L. It's, it's been that way for, uh, over a year.
Bye. Thanks for coming.
Like he's taking a picture.
I just have to go and have a conversation. So we, some of the people in reference to the library and, uh, it's been the policy of T R L, so it's not just Yell, Yell just finally implemented it.
Are there, is, I haven't been bathrooms in the library, so are they single stall, they multi stall?
I was under the impression they were open. Boys, girls, everything.
No, I mean, I mean, we go to, yeah, are they? Like there's two stalls and one bathroom.
I mean, this John Lewis was bringing up, well, we give money as a city to the library and so we have some say in it. And he was worried for the safety of his kids and other kids, so are we gonna at least answer this gentleman back something, or could you write to him back? Since he.
Never received it, you know.
Yes, only, it seems like only some of us did, I got it.
I didn't get it.
I got it. I mean, we should, when people ask us, we should address them back, I think that's.
Yeah.
I will, um.
Personally, I don't think. The only time there should be. Whatever is the gender inclusive restroom is the same, single person, uh, same occupants of that.
Right, I, I agree.
But if you are trans, most people, if you're trans, however you live your life, that's how people look at you and treat you anyway, so. It's none of my damn business.
It's just.
Not on the train that there's. Tons of wackos out there that are looking to do things to kids in the bathrooms, and if it does happen. I'll be the first one to go to prison, so.
I will reach out.
I, I read that guy's email, I understand his concerns, but at the same time, let's not get too crazy about it, like, just live your damn life with you.
Okay, but if you could just tell them that it's their policies on ours, so just write that down.
I did.
Okay, number two, um, had a constituent call me yesterday, very, very concerned, did I know any updates about the airport that might come to Thurston County? And because I was at the Nisqually River Council meeting and we had a whole plethora of people talk about it. Um, I did know some things and my take from it was that. Kinda not gonna happen here, too much wildlife corridor, too many tribal issues. So that's kind of the way I was feeling and he's like, well, I was reading that they're gonna make a decision on the location by June twenty third. Ju- June, June twenty twenty three, which is like in six months. So, uh, uh, the thing is, this stuff they, they're not advertising it, it's not on the news, they're not talking about it, so. We don't want things to slip under the table that we don't know. So because this person was very concerned, he lives in the area, he's got property in the area, you know.
It's, it's a legislative issue for the most part, um, they're gonna be the ones that are deciding on it, and yeah, they're gonna be deciding next year, likely.
He pointed out that the people making the selection were not from this area, they were from out of state. They, uh, had nothing to do with the tribes, that they were very third party or removed from the situation.
I think what people need to understand is there's going to be another airport. And they would dwindle it down to two different locations and the one here in Thurston County makes more sense than the other one. And people aren't gonna like it, it is what it is.
Pierce County is not very far away either.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Twenty years from now, but it's gonna happen.
And it's also not going to be in the international airport, it's gonna be a two runway regional airport. It's not gonna be six miles, which the radius circle shows, it's a small regional airport.
Like in Olympia?
We've already stated, it is a two runway nation. It wasn't a recommendation, that is what was being asked for, is where are we going to put a two runway regional airport? And the thing is, is that everybody's blown it out of proportion.
They're looking for somewhere to land seven three sevens other than C tech.
Those are big things. I mean, when, when, uh, when people ask us and we're supposed to be in the know, what do we, what do we say? It's just not in our hands, we don't know, it's.
We don't, we don't.
We have no say whatsoever, as the city is in this area, really.
Yeah, it, it's up to the state. All this stuff, um, you're gonna see more about, you're gonna hear more about after the session, during the session, um, but yeah, there. These are all recommendations to the legislature, the, they're official recommendations and all that, but at the end of the day, legislature controls the money. Um, they control what, where it goes and all that stuff, so, um, we have a.
Wherever they decide, no, it's gonna be eminent domain, New York, have a choice of it.
Yeah, a lot, I mean, Thurston County is very against it, you know, I wrote a letter against it with, along with, uh, the county, I signed on to that. Um, your P C is considering a letter, everyone's considering letters, everyone's against it, no one wants to sit in their backyard and all that stuff. Um, so we'll see how it goes, but, um, if I hear any new from legislature, my local, I know our local politicians, um, local legislation. Our local delegation of legislators are against it, are fighting against it, but. So is a lot of them too, so, but Andrew Marcus is our state rep here, local, he's on transportation committees ranking for house. He has a lot of poll, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
And last thing on a more mundane level, Cody, those, uh, city lights in the nice globes, uh, when were those gonna get bulbs in them? From P S E, was that a P S E?
The ones down here on Midway?
Yeah.
So we replaced the ones that were, didn't have electrical problems in the base, so the ones that aren't, uh, there's like two still out, I think, their, their electric should be able to place them. But we got.
When I came through tonight, there was only one on in the corner by the, um, the old, the bay, uh, the. The old theater and it was a green bulb. It's not, our downtown is not lit up very nicely at all.
Just changed the button, so they were on, I went this weekend, I went and they were all on except for two that we had, so I'll, I'll check.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up one thing that's not gonna be popular. No, 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 so.
Makes me look good.
Parade. Um, so every year, my, but we partake in the Montecito parade, lighted parade. These are nighttime parades and the city of Lacey we did last night. I know that they're a logistical nightmare.
That's what we're talking about doing for next year.
But lighted parades, the people love them, they're fun. Um, Montecito was a very small town, granted though, they don't have, you know, we're, we're a thoroughfare, I get that. Todd's giving.
It's what we're pushing for next year.
Okay, yeah, just, um, cause even the one in Lacey last night was very short. And, you know, they had the sheriff department and everything, and of course they had to block the streets, but it was just, it's so, they're so.
So, well, I'm gonna, I wanna do that too. No, that I would do, but I'm talking about getting the whole city.
So we are trying to do that and it's not just us, there's other partners involved too, but. Um, that's something that I'm pushing for pretty hard and, um.
Now that we have a snow making machine, we could have, is it something that you have to push hard or?
Oh, I don't wanna speak for other groups, but there's a lot of.
Well, seems like, doesn't mean you're speaking for it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna speak for, for the other groups, but I know for the city perspective, we're gonna push for it. Um, it, it's not just us that puts on these things, so there's other partners, so we gotta get buying for everybody. I, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for them. Um, I don't think it's animus, you know, that we wanted to, uh, um, a light parade, but I know I do and I know a lot of you do and, um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all things just from the eat, no one, it's nice.
Yeah, they're cool.
A lot of fun.
You know, Main Street, so she put on the plug one, and I used to work there, so I know, uh, so much goes into it, months and months of it.
Yeah, we receive a lot of.
And then doing it at night.
I.
I know it's, I know it's tough, I know. And, and I understand that and I know, cause I brought it up a couple of years.
We literally met with, about this and talked, discussed this today.
Cause I did my own a couple of years ago and didn't ask. Cause I did my own a couple of years ago and didn't ask. Remember that?
That's what it is.
Yeah, but, but we went through neighborhood, cause we had about. Okay, that was all I had. Glad, I'm glad you're. Because if you look at Todd's face, you know, from the police perspective, they're like, parades, oh.
It costs a lot, I mean, I didn't realize how many, for, um, was it parades we were talking about?
Yeah.
For, yeah, who are the officers to do that?
No, I.
Not just yell, obviously, you don't have many, but for surrounding jurisdictions.
And I understand that.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It costs a lot of money. But the people want it, so, uh, we'll, we'll do what we can to do.
Okay. Before December, there was National Night Out, and I know that was kind of a block. Are we putting anymore? Into that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do a lot of things different next year too, we learned a lot this year, um, you know, we're talking about Veterans Day, um. Like, city, um, led efforts and all that, I know, for you, Ryan, some of the other council members. Um, we're gonna take a bigger lead in a lot of these different things, we have a recreation. Um, coordinator that can do a lot of these things for the city now, so from, from our side. Um, so we're gonna, we're pushing for a lot, we're gonna do a lot of better events next year. I mean, this year went good too, we had more events this year, I think, than we've ever had, um. Now, for you, at least last two years, now, but for a long time though, I mean, it seemed like every weekend we were, we had something new, something big. Um, I think the only parade that was canceled was the. Christmas one, wasn't there? So I. We had one, you know. Didn't work out, but all the others, we still, we had a good year, I thought. Um, but yeah, we'll improve, we learned, we've done act, after action for, for, learn from mistakes, how we can prove. And next year is gonna be bigger and better.
Anything else? Yeah, one more thing, sorry.
Just close it, Holly.
No, aren't we, I know I had a calendar in here, but I can't find it, and I'm asking these questions because I knew. Isn't there a retreat planned at some, or we need to plan, start planning?
Yeah, we will start reaching out for that, we're just starting, um, we're trying to finalize for the staff, um, staff retreat.
Never been.
Well, let's do it. I'm sure the public would love to have us. Need to go to Vegas, anyway, um, we have, we have one thing for that too, we'll be reaching out here probably early January to get dates from, um, council.
To the next study session, possibly?
Uh, why not, I mean, we'll be reaching out for dates first, and then we'll do the actual planning and stuff, what we wanna discuss and all that stuff there.
Okay, thank you, that's really it, I got no more. Anything else?
Well.
One, two, three, going, gone. Turn us off.